Good morning. We are going to call the February 18th, 2025 Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Before we stand for the pledge, I just want to point out that this is the one-year anniversary of losing public safety officials in Burnsville for a great sacrifice of Paul Elmstrand, Matthew Rugie, and Adam Finseth. And also, this past week, we lost our CIO, Greg Sorensen. So I'll just ask if we stand for a moment of silent reflection or prayer before we do the pledge. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number two, amendments to the agenda. I did not see any. Want to make sure I didn't miss anything. There are none, so they will stand as distributed. Item number three, approved minutes of the February 4th, 2025 board meeting that were also distributed. Any changes? Mr. Chairman, of approval of those minutes? A motion?
Second.
In the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Number four, recognition of interested citizens. We've got a full room, lots of fun presentations here. But is there anyone that would like to address the board for any item that is not on the agenda? Now is a great time to take advantage of it. Wish more people would. Not seeing anyone. All right, we're going to move on to item 5.1 and receive information from, I mean, what was attempt today?
I had minus 20 at home.
You had minus 20. We're going to receive information from the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District. Is there, is there an outbreak that we're not aware of in February that you're going to come and?
Chicken gunya.
Or life is good. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Daniel Huff. I'm the executive director of the Metropolitan Mosquito Control District. I'm joined here today by our public affairs manager, Alex Carlson, who will be given our presentation, and
Oh. Trevor Navatney, who is at our Jordan facility that serves Scott County and Carver County.
I want to thank you all for welcoming us here today and thank you for your support. We are very well-served by Commissioner Wolfe and your Chair, Commissioner Beer, on our board, and they represent Scott County residents on the MMCD board. What I'd like to do is just turn it over to Alex. We'll give a very brief presentation because we know you're push for time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. It's funny you had mentioned the temperature because actually last year this time, we had already found our first deer tick of the year, and a week from now, we found our first mosquito larva at the end of February last year. So we're grateful for these cold temperatures. They really help us out by slowing things down and, and helping us make sure we're prepared for the upcoming season. So most of you have seen this presentation before, and I know you have a full agenda today, so I'm going to go quickly past the mosquito basics, because you're all mosquito experts, I assume, and really focus on what's new for this year. But just a reminder, we're served, we serve the seven counties in the metro area, and an interesting thing that we like to share is that the median home in the district pays about $11 per year for all of the services that mosquito control provides, which I think, we think is a pretty great deal. The services that we do provide are comprehensive mosquito control, mosquito borne disease suppression. We really consider ourselves public health first when we think of our mission. So monitoring and suppressing mosquito borne disease and tick borne disease is very important. We do public education about mosquitoes and ticks, and then we also do black fly or biting gnat control. Just a reminder about mosquitoes, the bottom line is water is incredibly important to mosquitoes. So we track weather, we track rain patterns, and that really determines what the mosquito season is going to be like. Usually about an inch of rain is enough to trigger a brood, we call it, is when a species of mosquito is about to emerge from their eggs and live in the water for about a week, and then it's about a week after that rain where they become out of the water as adult mosquitoes. So we're following that rain. When we see those heavy rainfalls, it's about a week later that we'll see the peak in mosquitoes. When we think of mosquito habitat, we think of water. So permanent water, floodwater, and then man-made habitat that holds water. So big part of our public education is reminding people, anything that can hold stagnant water can become mosquito habitat. So check your yard for any buckets or clogged gutters or things like that that can be holding that water, and eliminate those to really help your neighbors and your community reduce mosquito borne disease. When we talk about surveillance, we're talking about wetland surveillance. So when you see MMCD trucks out, usually what we're doing is using our favorite tool called the long-handled dipper, stepping into the wetland, doing a skim along the surface to figure out how much larva is there. Then we take those larva samples and bring them back to our entomology lab, which we have in St. Paul, and they look through each larval sample that we bring back to determine if it's a human biting species that merits control. Of the 52 species, only about half of them impact humans at all. So if it's not a human biting species, we don't target that. And then we also bring back the adult samples to determine if they're disease vectors. And we have a vector ecologist on staff who can actually test in our lab if mosquitoes are carrying West Nile. And so we can be proactive when it comes to potential West Nile outbreaks. And then when it comes to control methods, a lot of people know MMCD because of our helicopters, flying over those wetlands and swamps and marshes in the summertime, especially right after it rains. We have a very short window of a couple days after that rainfall happens in order to get our materials in the water. So larval control is really our primary method. We consider ourselves a larval control agency, and the table at the bottom really demonstrates that. Especially, you know, interesting is 2021 through 2023 were drought years with very little rain during the summer, and so you can see that affected the number of larval acres that we treated. And then 2024 was a very wet year with a lot of rain, so we had a significant increase in the larval acres that we had to treat. When we talk about mosquito borne disease, the main one of concern in Minnesota is West Nile virus. It's the most common, and this is from a mosquito species that likes man-made habitats. So they actually thrive in dry, humid, hot conditions because they find existing sources of standing water, whether that's waste tires or catch basins or anything like that. So they don't need the ponds to fill up with water in order to really thrive. They'll find habitat wherever they can get it. Then we also have Jamestown Canyon virus, lacrosse encephalitis, which is a disease that affects younger people, mainly children, and then Triple E or Eastern equine encephalitis. It's a disease, there's never been a human case in Minnesota, but there have been horse cases, and it's the most deadly mosquito disease in the United States, has about a 30% mortality rate. So it's very dangerous, something we want to make sure that we're preventing at all costs. And then dog heartworm, good reminder that your pets are susceptible to mosquitoes as well. We practice environmental stewardship. The terminology that we use is integrated pest management. It's really a widespread use of ensuring that we're making as safe, taking as many safety precautions as we can and being as effective as possible. So our practices are reviewed every year by a technical advisory board, basically a scientific review panel that looks over our, our operations, makes recommendations, and also can help us engage in studies that can really help us make sure we're being as effective as possible. So looking at last year, the big story from last year was above-average rainfall throughout the summer. So pretty much every week, we had mosquito broods, and we had helicopter activity, just because the rainfall was so consistent. Interestingly, though, that didn't lead to a huge spike in mosquitoes, and the main reason for that is the three main species that we have that cause human nuisance, Ades vexans and coccolatidae perturbans, they were affected by the previous years of drought. So we had three years of drought that really brought those numbers low, so it took a lot of rain to really bring those numbers back up. It wasn't until the end of the summer that we started seeing those species kind of rebound. I already mentioned our mild winter last year and our warm spring, so we found, everything started early, and you can see we were above average earlier than normal. And then we did have fewer instances of West Nile last year, and that helped because we had a lot more rain and cooler temperatures, whereas the West Nile mosquitoes tend to thrive in hot, dry temperatures. For black flies, the spring flooding along the Minnesota River caused a surge in black fly numbers, but they did decline then through the rest of the season. So just looking at Scott County, you can just see the difference there between a drought year and a wet year. So we doubled our, more than doubled our larval inspections and more than doubled our acres that were treated last year, just because we had to respond to rain, and whenever there was rain events, that triggered more treatments necessary. We also had to increase the number of adult acres, but that's a very small percentage of the total amount we do. We did fewer catch basins, removed fewer tires, and a lot of that just has to do with the fact that we were so busy with helicopter work. Our staff was very consumed with, you know, getting ahead of those mosquito broods that were in the large wetlands that would affect the most people, so it gave us just less time to do some of the other additional work that we do. And then we did see an increase in calls, probably because people were starting to see a few more mosquitoes and black flies. Looking at the budget, so this just shows our maximum levy and the amount that we levy each year. The Scott County line is the one that impacts residents of Scott County, and you can see the change for the entire county is only $1,000 difference. So not really going to, people aren't really going to notice a big difference, but our budget is increasing to account for some new staffing positions and just to prepare for the follow-up of after a wet year, to make sure that we're prepared for whatever weather might come this year. Looking ahead to this year, we got a couple exciting things on the agenda. First of all, we've done a major expansion of our drone program. So it's really been kind of something that we've slowly been building over the last couple of years, but this year, we've bought a new series of drones, so that each facility is going to be using drones this year, and these are used for both surveillance and treatment. The main function of our drones is to treat kind of those medium to small-sized wetlands. It's really more effective use of staff time. Before, they had to put on, you know, the chest waiters, walk into the water with a backpack, and kind of do the distribution of materials that way. Took a lot of time, wasn't very safe, and didn't get a very even distribution, whereas the drones can be programmed to fly perfectly distributed, make sure they're getting the materials where they need to be, so we're having the biggest impact on those mosquitoes. We're undergoing a new strategic plan, and we're going to unveil that in the spring. So we've partnered with Proudie Project to help us come up with a new strategic plan to really, you know, help expand our operations, be more environmentally sustainable, and just continue to grow. We're increasing our educational outreach as part of that, so we're going to be, you know, at events throughout the summer. You'll see us at the Scott County Fair again, but we're also going to be at schools and other events throughout the summer. And then another change that's coming this year is our tire recycling procedure. So typically, what we do is we go out and we will collect and recycle tires when people call us. We're still going to be recycling tires, but this time, we're going to do dedicated drop-off days so people can bring their tires to us. We're also partnering with cities who already are holding recycling events to have people bring their tires to those cities so that we can help them take care of the disposal of those. This is one of the big questions we always get, is what are mosquitoes going to be like this year? So the outlook for this year, it's too early to predict. I mean, we're seeing below temperatures or below zero temperatures, so it's, we don't know what the summer is going to be like yet. We look at the rain precipitation. We're kind of in between a dry pattern to the west and a wet pattern to the east, so Minnesota's kind of unpredictable at this point. The one thing that we can make with some accuracy prediction we can make is the cattail mosquitoes, and the unfortunate news there is because of last year's rain and the breeding that happened in the cattail mosquitoes, we're going to expect a big spike this year. And actually, the acres found breeding last fall was higher than it's been in 10 years of cattail acres. So we're going to be out doing everything we can to treat those areas so that people aren't overwhelmed by cattail mosquitoes, but this is a unique species that actually hatches in the fall and then emerges the following summer. So those mosquitoes are already in the water, so we're going to get out to them as soon as we can when the, when the conditions allow us. And then the good news for the invasive species is the cold weather really will help. So we saw a high number of lone star ticks last year. Those are probably all wiped out by this cold weather, and then the Ades albipictus, which is a tropical species that usually comes up every year, and we find a couple of them in the summertime. Any that have laid their eggs are probably not going to be able to return just because of the cold temperatures. So we like the cold. Resources for residents, people can use our website. You can view maps. You can do a residence guide where you can learn how to control mosquitoes in your own backyard. It's really helpful, you know, just tips, because we can't be in everybody's backyard at all times, so things that you can do to help us really go a long way. This is what those maps look like. So they're interactive. You can click around and find out where the mosquito habitats are in your neighborhood. It's really, it's got about 20 years of data, so sometimes you think, you know, the pond down the road is where the mosquitoes are coming from, but you actually find out it's a, it's a roadside ditch or something like that. So you can really learn more about the mosquitoes in your area. Sign up for email alerts, and we'll let you know when our helicopters are starting to be out or when any adults' treatments are planned. Public outreach, you'll see our mascot. Her name is Victoria. She makes appearances at parades and other events throughout the summer, so look out for her. And also, there's our mosquito float, which you'll see at parades and other events. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Alex, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd just say thank you. Just, I was making notes myself to make sure I refer people to the website because there's a lot of great information on there. I really appreciate how just the user friendliness of it has increased the last years. One thing I see is increase in public outreach and, you know, having the mascot out, fairs, things like that. Can you talk a little bit about what you hope the outcomes are of the public, you know, as we all have to look at our expenditures and things like that? What are, what are the outcomes we're hoping for from the increased public outreach?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. So when we do a public outreach, we have a couple goals in mind. One is just general awareness, because we get a lot of, you know, concerned citizens. They see helicopters out, and they don't know what we're doing, what we're applying, and things like that. So educating, you know, what we're doing and all the environmental precautions that we take. Another thing is people taking precautions themselves. So we do a lot, we have a lot of handouts about checking for ticks, bug sprays that we recommend, and then sources of standing water that people may not realize. So helping people go out and remove those sources of standing water. And then another big thing for us is recruitment, because we, most of our staff are seasonal staff. They're out during the mosquito season, and it's always a struggle for us to find the 200 or so seasonal staff people. So when we're out and about, we like to remind, especially, you know, younger people who are thinking about summer jobs, to think about us when they're out and out looking for, for something to do this summer.
Great, thank you. That's very helpful.
Can I just, you know, excuse me, the tire recycling, how are you, how are you going to get that out there that people know about it and?
Thank you. Yeah, we're still going to advertise that we do tire recycling, and then when people call us, we're going to just notify them about the pickup dates that we're offering.
Okay, because there is an area out in my, by the Elko Speedway, and there's tires everywhere out there. So if you could just park one of those trucks out there, just put it out there for a week.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolfe. And we'll, we'll still have our staff out doing surveillance, and if we find tire piles, we'll, we'll remove them when they're out. But it's more just, we get a lot of, last year was a struggle because we had a lot of people calling with six tires, and then it was, with all the rain that we were getting, it was hard for us to get out at certain times to get those tires. And so if we can say, you know, bring those tires to us, that'll really help us.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I have a foger up that I was considering using up at the Lake Place for mosquitoes, but then I, I realized that we have a lot of dragonflies. Would I be killing the dragonflies with the fogger for mosquitoes?
Thanks, Commissioner Ulrich. So that's a good question. We always just say refer to what the label recommends. For dragonflies specifically, they tend to be closer to the lake, and usually the fogger will say, you're not supposed to apply it within a certain perimeter of any body of water, because some of those materials can be toxic to aquatic species like fish and other things. So usually, if you're following the label and staying a certain distance from the, those sources of water, then you're probably okay. But it's another reason you might want to check out our residence guide, because we do recommend, you know, what, you know, avoid flowering plants, avoid milkweed and things like that with any product that could be probably potentially harmful to other insects.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so a couple follow-up questions on that. I mean, we're always talking about safety of materials used, and people are calling in, emailing or whatever, so that is always front of mind, that you want to target the ones that are biting Commissioner Wolfe.
Specifically, yes.
Yes.
Because I'm so sweet.
So can you just tell, talk a little bit about some of the bacteria that are used to control?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Beer. So our main ingredient that we use is called BTI, Bacillus thuringiensis, israelensis, which is fun to say, but
Time's fast.
Nope, I'm just going to go BTI. But it's, it's a really amazing product. It's attached to a corn granule, so when the people see, they'll see bits of corn granules in the water, and it has a bacteria that disrupts the alkaline gut of a mosquito larva. But that bacteria strain is very specific to mosquito larvae, so any other animal that eats it or comes in contact with it won't be harmed. It's just specific to the gut of specific fly species, mosquitoes, black flies, and fungus gnats are the only ones that have had any sort of, you know, reaction to it. So that's our main ingredient that we use, and then we have some other larval control materials that are more long-term that we've, you know, measured for efficacy but also safety to make sure that they're not harming other aquatic animals. So all those, all the ingredients on our website, but there's also great studies done by EPA and by other organizations just to ensure that these are effective. But these are pretty worldwide known as the safest products to use.
Thank you. I just thought that cared repeating. So yeah, the tire recycling will be a very interesting test on that because it's free to folks that want to use that. Am I right?
Yes, it is.
So just instead of the ditch, bring them to the collection site. And that website is amazing. I keep telling people that. It's, it's user-friendly. It's like real data. It's, it's usable data. It's not government-y in its website form. It's, it's, the function is amazing. I tell people to check that out all the time, especially as we have areas that are developing, you know. Is this pond, has it been treated? Like, when was it? Is it even on the map? And that's a great tool. So, all right, I think that is it for me. Thank you very much. Hopefully, this cold weather kills mosquitoes. I know it won't, but we can help, right? We can help, yeah. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, we're going to move on to item number 6.1 and accept the 2024 Commissioners' Circle of Excellence Award. Love it. Just a second as we get this presentation up. Barb Doll waiting in the wings. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Commissioner and all the Commissioner, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So our next agenda item is the presentation from the Department of Human Services Commissioner of Excellence Award. This is for our coordinated response program, and I would first just really like to acknowledge our DHS staff and Deputy Commissioner Nikki Fargo, who are here today, and they really selected this project for this recognition. Before, though, I turn the podium over to her, I just want to give a little bit of a quick history on how we got to this point. And if we can, if we can start back about a decade ago, our county board had noticed that we had about 150 people a day were the average amount of people that were participating in our jail services. And with that, we had identified a strategic plan, and within that strategic plan, a strategy to decriminalize mental illness. This was led by Tim Cleveland and Pam Selvick, and this effort really resulted in the recommendation to establish a part-time reentry person in the jail through community corrections. This role is still a vital partner within this work, but it really resulted in us needing further action. And through our public health department, we received some funding a while back, and this really helped us to study this further, knowing that we were seeing additional issues related to housing and substance abuse and, and mental health issues. This also aligned with feedback that we're receiving from our law enforcement partners through Savage and Shakopee and Sheriff Henin, and then along with information that our local advisory council on mental health was all pointing to the fact that we needed a coordinated response model. As we emerged from COVID, we seized the opportunity to receive one-time crisis funding through DHS to do a pilot project, and also during this time, we knew that we had sustainability through the opioid settlement dollars that we would be able to really launch a coordinated response program, and that will be celebrating its two-year anniversary this March. This partnership is between Scott County Health and Human Services, the sheriff's office, the city of Savage, and Shakopee Police Departments, and we utilized social workers trained in engagement, de-escalation, and resource connection. These social workers provide outreach following law enforcement referrals and coordinate services for those exiting the Scott County jail. Our goal is really to resolve community crises, connect residents with necessary services, and reduce the need for jail time while fostering strong partnerships with law enforcement. After almost two years of operation, this program has shown positive and impactful results. Chief Tate shared a notable example of this in December's Scott County delivers, recounting an individual who called law enforcement 85 times in 2023 for mental health-related issues, and in 2024, this number was reduced to four calls, saving officer time and really creating stability for that individual. Over the past five years, our county board has focused on preventative and person-centered work. In housing, we've seen the average time and the numbers on the coordinated entry list have decreased, offering options really across the continuum. Family resource centers have connected families to resources early, resulting in the lowest number of children placed outside the home in 20 years. New cognitive and evidence-based programming corrections are being initiated, and our coordinated response program in collaboration with law enforcement offers a tailored and another preventative coordinated response. We, within Health and Human Services, know that we are just a piece of the partnership that really is needed to provide public safety for our community. Our law enforcement partners are integral to this program, but we know that they've also continued to involve their work and bring other creative initiatives into play. All of these tools can help us identify where we are improving lives with the hope of also making our communities safer. Notably, through these efforts, we are perhaps influencing the very thing that our Scott County strategic plan looked to influence just a decade ago, as the average daily population has decreased to a low of 56 Scott County-related jail involvement individuals just recently. So many thanks to our coordinated response team, our law enforcement partners, the board for really supporting this initiative, DHS for providing the funding, and our dedicated departments who have really embraced and lift up this initiative. These collective efforts are transforming our work. They're strengthening our partnerships and ultimately changing the lives of those we serve. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Nikki Fargo.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and thanks, Barb, for that introduction. Good morning, everyone. My name is Nikki Farago, and I am Deputy Commissioner at the Minnesota Department of Human Services. I'm really honored to be here with all of you today to present this award and to really celebrate some of the most impactful transformative work that's happening in Minnesota right now. You know, we're here today to recognize the excellence in both human services and public safety that Scott County Coordinated Response exemplifies each and every day. As you know, mental health is often at the center of some of the most challenging situations that law enforcement and first responders encounter. For far too long, people who experienced mental health crises have been funneled into the criminal justice system simply because they didn't have access to the care and support that they really needed. This creates a cycle that is not only harmful to those involved, but also to the communities at large. Scott County saw this problem, and you did something about it. Thanks to its strong community partnerships and innovative thinking, Scott County Coordinated Response officially launched in 2023 to bridge those service gaps. And it took a lot of hard work to get there. As Barb noted, this started a long time ago. Back in 2014, the county began exploring how you could better connect law enforcement with those mental health professionals to create a more effective, compassionate response to those terribly difficult moments. By 2020, you had advanced the initiative by collecting data at your jail with support from a grant by Ucare. This data was a pivotal piece of the puzzle, helping you to understand the scope of the problem and how best to come up with a solution, leading to eventual funding in 2022 for full implementation. Today, this initiative is growing and thriving. What makes Scott County Coordinated Response so special? To me, it's really about the collaboration. You brought together Scott County Health and Human Services and law enforcement agencies, including the sheriff's office and county jail, the Savage Police Department, and the Shakopee Police Department, and paired them with social workers who are trained in engagement, de-escalation, and resource connection. These social workers don't just respond in the moment, they connect people with ongoing services and provide a comprehensive wraparound approach that helps break the cycle of crisis and incarceration. The program's results speak for themselves. Since its launch, Scott County Coordinated Response has engaged 68% of individuals referred by law enforcement, with 100% engagement in the county jail due to self-referrals. And we also heard from Barb earlier about other incredible metrics of success in this program. But of course, it's not just about the numbers. It's about the lives that are impacted. Social workers in the program help connect individuals to vital services like case management, financial eligibility, workforce training, medical care, and mental health services. In doing so, Scott County is addressing the root cause of crisis, providing people with the tools they need to improve their well-being and avoid future interactions with the criminal justice system. One of the standout features of Scott County Coordinated Response is the strong partnerships between law enforcement and mental health professionals. Responders accompany officers on calls, working together to ensure the best possible response for individuals in mental health distress. This type of partnership not only improves immediate outcomes for residents, but also builds trust and understanding between law enforcement and the community. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. The program continues to receive praise from everyone involved, partners, and most importantly, residents. It's clear that this is a program that is making a real difference in people's lives. As we look to the future, Scott County's vision is clear. Expanding the program to more police departments and The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. The program continues to receive praise from everyone involved, partners, and most importantly, residents. It's clear that this is a program that is making a real difference in people's lives. As we look to the future, Scott County's vision is clear: expanding the program to more police departments and continuing to build on the progress that's been made. This is a model that we know can be an inspiration for other communities, showing that when we combine mental health expertise with law enforcement, we create safer, healthier communities for everyone. This is one of the favorite parts that I have in this job. I'm always moved by the insights, the skills, the commitment, and the compassion of people that we partner with, like we see in Scott County Coordinated Response. Too often, this work is unrecognized, and you are unsung heroes who work each and every day to achieve results that make a real difference to people. It's wonderful for me to be here to celebrate your work and your passion by presenting you with a Circle of Excellence Award, which we'll do here in just a minute. These awards have been around for more than a decade. They're given to organizations that support the DHS mission, contribute to our current goals, demonstrate best practices in human services, achieve results that impact clients, partner with others in the human services system, and strengthen equity in human services and reduce disparities in your communities. You truly exemplify each and every one of those qualities, and we want to share your successes with all of DHS's partners. Thank you, and we look forward to presenting the plaques, recognizing your work to everyone involved after a few words from, from all of you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to address any questions? Whole room.
No questions. Thank you very much for the recognition. I, I just want to thank everyone. There's so many people in this room who made this happen. And it true, I mean, the results. And Assistant Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner, you, you made it right. The residents. I've been contacted or been involved with a couple of residents whose lives have been changed because of this program. There's an elderly woman who's still living in her house in the community in Shakopee because of this program. There's, you know, things like that are what we envisioned, I think, what several very people smarter than me in the crowd envisioned, that we would, through this program, decrease the need for higher-end services, allow people to stay in the community. So it, it's, it's wonderful. I'm just, thank you. Thank you so much for all the work you've put in.
And I think that the transactions stand for themselves. I mean, there's, there's the human change, which is what we're all about. We want those transformative outcomes. But from 85 or whatever the number was, down to four, the service, the police calls? I mean, just the transactional volume alone on something like that is, and then allows us to do more of the hands and feet work with people as opposed to the transactional side of it. So in, in the, I really do believe that those are not exceptions. I mean, these are what, these are outcomes that happen with this. You know, sometimes you hear different programs, and you only hear the high spots. But this is one of those programs that just seems like it just hits on many of the cylinders. So congratulations. Thank you.
I would just like to comment that I appreciate the work that the staff has done to get this implemented. I remember having conversations a number of years ago with the Chief Tate at the City of Shakopee and him explaining why this is such a need. So I'm glad that we made the decision to have that partnership with the cities and along with our, our county. And I just really appreciate the work that you're doing because I know it has a great impact on our, our community. Thank you.
I mean, moved to tears, right? It's good. It's good. It's good. Passion. Anyone else? Now is your moment. Well, actually, when you do the work is your moment. This is, this is the celebration. Celebration. All right.
Need to get some plaques out and then get a picture of everybody up here with the board and the DHS.
Barb's on the move. I feel like we need a red carpet here, but the microphone will have to do.
Maybe somebody from the Sheriff's Office.
Here we go.
Savage Police Department.
Savage in the house.
It's extra cold for you this morning. There you go.
Scott County Jail. Shakopee Police Department. Scott County Health and Human Services.
Yeah, let's go in front. Yeah. We get like the people that are doing the work.
Yes, yes, yes. I guess we're supposed to get out there. I feel like we need this duck.
We don't look weird out here.
Just taking a bunch right now. Everyone smile, say cheese.
Hold still. Hold it. Come on, Connor. Let's go.
Should also, also mention that there are some refreshments down at the end of the hall for, for those that were just, as part of this presentation. And, and that may or may not continue as I've been thinking about moving to item 6.2. I'm thinking about just skipping that today. I don't know. No? Just, should we just go, go pass?
I mean, she's not allowed to retire.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Yes, yes. Yes, thank you for clarifying. Fine. 6.2. Recognition of Scott County Retiree Chris Harder. Yes, that is, that was the reason. Yes, I'm getting to be clear, like, we're not necessarily, we're, we're for the celebration, but we're not for the reason. How about that?
Yeah, we've had quite a few of these, maybe way too many recently. So we are, we're here to celebrate Chris's retirement. You know, and how do you start to talk about Chris? It's a, I did a little digging back into her personnel file. And it appears she graduated from the University of Wisconsin.
Boo.
Eclera in 1982 with a bachelor's degree in social work. She appeared to take a, quote, "gap summer" and began her illustrious career as a social service intake and assessment worker. For three years, she received and screened child maltreatment reports, conducted investigations, provided mandated reporter training, and transitioned families to ongoing social workers for service. But I also noted a single line at the end of her application where she talked about she received, screened, and conducted assessments of individuals in mental health, crisis, and/or vulnerable adults. She worked in the trenches, learning the hands-on, difficult work of job protection from the ground up, but also learning about mental health and impacts it has on his families, which she very clearly carried over into her future work, understanding the bigger picture, what we just talked about here today. She then makes a very wise decision and moves to Minnesota. She worked for Anoka County for the next 12 years as a child protection social worker, working with families to implement case plans and linking services, working with the courts and schools, included three years in a permanency planning project, trying to drive change and improvements. And then she spends the next two years in Anoka County as a service supervisor, family services supervisor. Here she supervises eight child protection workers and three support staff, and again was involved with different teams in Anoka County, growing and trying to improve process and collaboration. The next nine years are now spent at the State of Minnesota as a child welfare program and continuous improvement consultant. At first focused on quality assurance to review cases, interview stakeholders, and highlight best practices to make program improvements. She then goes out and works with counties throughout the state to implement change management processes to improve outcomes for families. In January of 2014, though, she decided she's had enough of the state, wise decision, and comes to Scott County as a social worker supervisor. She starts her employment here on January 6th of 2014, little, not too long ago, and spends the next four years as a child protection supervisor for Scott County. This is just about the time we are beginning to work on our CQ and our continuous quality improvement at an organizational level, moving it out of the departments. Our annual performance report was just beginning to take shape. And Scott Delivers was still, if you remember, really business-oriented, but ready to take a step forward. At this time in our Delivering What Matters meetings, where right now we bring people in, we went out and worked, met with each one of the small groups and then the business units. And Judith and I would, went out, we met with this child program, Protection Workers Team. And there was a supervisor who was engaged, actually posted Judith on data. It was kind of fun to watch and was just darn curious about everything about delivering what matters. The same thing the next year. Well, at this point, Judith is discussing retirement. So I go on to have a meeting with Ms. Harder about her career goals and continuous quality improvement. Well, she is really, I think the word she used was humbled that I would talk with her about this in some type of a team effort or a mobility assignment. But she has these goals in child protection she needs to get done. The same discussion the next year over coffee. So at this point, now Judith says, I'm ready to retire, and we need to post the position. So I have to go ahead and post the position. Well, guess who comes and says, I've accomplished my goals and I'm going to apply? So in August of 2018, Chris becomes the first Quality Improvement Manager in Scott County. She has taken our annual report to a new level. She's transformed that document to provide a historic perspective for this county on the issues and important items each year, as well as the programs that are mandated in those critical programs and how we provide services. When she took the job, I got a lot, oh, great, you got another HHS person. How's this going to go? But my guess is, based on her curiosity, that Chris today could tell you what the 95-105 assessment requirement is, the difference between a principal and a minor arterial, the different pod requirements in a jail, and many other data points in this county. She has drilled us all on community indicators, key performance indicators, and business measures. She has transformed Scott Delivers from business data to major initiatives our communities should care about, which has also provided growth and leadership opportunities for staff, no matter which side of the V you sit on. She has worked to create the Commissioner's weekly data report, which gets more hits than most any other report we produce, social media or webpage. She has done this with typically one key staff member for most of her career, Mary Keener, Evan. But the beauty of Chris is she lives our values. So collaboration, there you go. She knows each team and where to generate that data from and has put together a team that makes that report move forward. During COVID, she was a key part of our strategic services team, the work to get the key services that we would provide, how we would do those, and expectations of staff to keep people safe. She has worked on FISH process improvements, delivered faith-based housing project, led roundtables, participated in SOLO and family resource centers. And the list goes on and on and on as I was sitting there working on this. Her facilitation skills are outstanding. When you can pull concepts out of a Commissioner Beer, a Commissioner Brucki, and a Commissioner Beard and deliver on them, that's amazing to me. But beyond her work ethics and skills, she's just a darn awesome human being. She always has a smile. It didn't matter what the meeting, what the day, she came prepared and upbeat. And that's really hard in this day and age. She has an uncanny sense for wanting to take a discussion a bit offline and let you dream and then tie it back, especially on Friday afternoons. She drove the discussions on we need to change how we look at data and outcomes together, working together to put the budget book summary sheets. It didn't even matter that she was hampered by a system that couldn't provide it. She, Steve, Mary, Evan, Jen BB, it didn't matter. She figured out how to get it done and move it forward. So today, we get to celebrate the career of Chris and all of the many families that she has impacted, which is a lot when you go back to 1983. The organization she has left a mark on and the differences she has made in her career. I personally am going to miss that upbeat personality and smile that she brought to every discussion, including our Allo's Housing, and how that has just made us a better organization. Hard conversations, easy conversations. It was always about getting better as an organization. So our loss has certainly marked her husband, Henry and Stella, her grandchildren's gain. And I hope you enjoy that goal of golfing in every state. I hope the Badgers continue their losing streak to Minnesota, looking after your mom and enjoying those grandkids. We will miss you and be forever thankful what you have done at Scott County. Do others have something they'd like to say?
Oh, wait a minute. I should give you this. As Danny's walking up. Christine A. Harder, in recognition of dedicated service from January 6, 2014 to March 7, 2025, presented by the Scott County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
So one of the first things I heard about Chris when she was starting her job as Quality Improvement Manager was she had two requirements of Leslie. She did not want to work on the budget, and she did not want to report to this new CFO guy. Well, you never had to report to me, but we did get you deeply involved in the budget. Maybe except for Leslie, probably nobody's worked more closely with Chris on last-minute things popping into places than I have over the last almost seven years. Started out working four hours on Saturday or Friday mornings over at the Shakopee City Hall, learning about how we're going to do PBB, all of these things, and a collegial work environment became about. Then we had COVID and started working deeply in that and sat next to each other over in the new building once we got kicked out of here. And then my third child came along, and Chris offered me some advice only she could do, help me through that. That's where I went from being coworkers to, I hope, friends. It was an exciting and also uncertain time in my life that having that person there that I could say, what about this? Or what about that? And what's going to happen next? And that was truly valuable to me and something that I will never forget of Chris offering to me. Since that time... Since that time, we have worked on many, many other things, getting through there, being able to go in and vent to each other and say, "What on earth is Leslie thinking?"
Nice, nice.
Figuring out how to do this, putting together last-minute presentations for our objective area teams, and just trying to spin gold wherever we can. But at that moment in my life, Chris was there for me, and I will never forget that and always cherish that.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. When Chris notified me of her plans to retire, my initial response was one of psychological avoidance. I thought, "If I just ignored this, maybe this little bit of reality would go away, or maybe it would magically turn to something that I found more favorable." But eventually I sent her, I think, an appropriately congratulatory email that included two lines of a poem by a man named Brian Doyle called "Poem for a Dear Friend", which with the inclusion of a slight paraphrase, goes like this. "I don't tell you how much it matters to me that you are my friend and colleague. I'll never tell you bluntly and face-to-face." And Chris immediately responded and said she would hold me to not telling her that, how much I appreciate her bluntly and face-to-face. So there's not much that I can say. I'm pack-bound not to include a bunch of stuff in this remarks, in these remarks. So I'll start by telling you I don't really have the words to say in front of these people how much I appreciate you and respect you as a person. I'm not gonna tell you that I wouldn't be able to do my job even half as well as I do if it hadn't been for the many years of learning from your example of working with intention and a focus on outcomes. Nor am I going to tell you how grateful I am to have witnessed over and over your ability to lead with clarity and patience, to treat people with dignity and care, and to hold yourself and those around you to the highest standards of public service. I won't say anything about the hours of work you put in that no one but Mark ever saw, planning and advancing ARPA projects, tickling the ivories as a founding member of the greatest local government care yelping band of all time, facilitating meetings so skillfully people don't even know they're being facilitated, working with Lisa Frees to get CARES dollars out the door in a matter of months, responding to 4:00 AM or 3:00 AM emails, leading the jail study, making this a data-driven organization, serving as the library director, do you remember that? That was kind of fun. But we can't talk about any of that. And I won't even mention what an honor and a privilege and a true joy it has been to get to work with you, not only because of the transformational impact you've had on this organization, which other people have articulated very eloquently. You've transformed the people in it and the residents we serve. It's not just a privilege and a joy and an honor to work with you because of your humor, nor because you're both the kind one and the smart one. And that really kills me to have to admit that, that you're both of those things. But because I admire you so much as a person. So given all the things I cannot talk about because I promised I wouldn't, I just offer a simple and heartfelt thank you.
Wow.
Wow, right?
Yep. Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you, not thank you for retiring, thank you for all you've done. I think if we could change the picture in the dictionary encyclopedia about public servant, we should put a picture of you. You, Chris, I mean, you changed individual lives so much in your early work. You've devoted yourself to this, and now you've changed systems. It's exactly, I've never in all my work with you thought of you even doing this for a job. You do it as a passion, and it means so much to everybody you've served. So thank you for choosing public service in Scott County. My mantra that I say, but you're the person who's taught me that. You've really taught me what a true public servant is. Also, you've taught me and so many other people in this organization, joy, joy in our work and that ability, even when those things happen, and I won't be like others and mention names, but when things happen and it doesn't go the way we want, you still bring joy and the ability to make it better. So all the things that have already been said, but thank you for doing the work and showing so many of us how to do the work. Thank you for giving joy to my life and being my friend. And we will miss you. Scott County will miss you. I hope I won't miss you, because I hope I see you all the time. So thank you, happy retirement. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Are we still doing this thing?
No.
So like, we gonna rip that? That's what I'm talking about.
Can I speak?
Fine.
So I want to thank people for the truly kind words and for just some time on what I know is really in a busy agenda today. Your job is to recognize the people like the coordinated entry or the coordinated response folks, but I appreciate a few minutes with you. I think at the end, at the end of people's careers, what they want is they want to think that they did a good job and that they made a difference, right? No matter where you are, what your job is. And so as I have gone through my career, I have tried to hold up and speak to people that have made me better at my job and that have helped me contribute to the things that I wanted to impact. And so there's a couple of things I want to recognize here. First is Pam Selvig. I wouldn't have come to Scott County without her blessing. We had been friends for decades, and it can be tricky coming to work for and with friends. And so without her support, I wouldn't have come to Scott County at all. And so like, I really recognize what a huge impact that was on my decision, and I'm grateful for that. Suzanne Arson hired me. And I came into child protection here. She was teaching an innovative framework called Signs of Safety. I didn't know it, I had to learn it. She was an excellent teacher, expanded my skills as a supervisor. And once that practice was solidified in child protection, she expanded her focus to the prevention work. And that work was just taking off as I was leaving. And it has been very exciting for me to be a cheerleader on the sideline, watching that work and the work that you have all done together to build that prevention framework. She gave me a chance to work on a really exceptional child protection team with work I loved and people I cared about deeply. When I was ready to leave CP, Leslie opened that door and supported my opportunity to come and work at an org level. She is a great coach. She is the right person at the right time for me, and she was a great coach. Working with her has made me smarter and sharper. She has taught me about lifelong learning. She's helped me to see important connections that bring people together and to prevent divide and silos and breakdowns. Working with her has taught me to listen and to produce results. It has taught me nothing about being a safe driver. It has taught me, taught me a little bit about taking good pictures and a lot about following through on my backswing when I hit a golf ball. A group of people that I never really thought I would speak to up here, but I think is really important, is the group of people that are part of the Division Director team, including the sheriff and the county attorney. And working with the DD team has also impacted my work and made me better. Those folks, I think, have largely thankless jobs, right? Like, you know who they are, you know the challenges they work for, work with every day, day in and day out, often on nights, often on weekends. Along with their managers, they have challenged me and the way I do my work. For example, Cindy Geis, first meeting, "This doesn't make any sense." Jeanne Anderson, first meeting, "This doesn't make any sense." Scott Redkey, "I will get this data for you, but it better be worth my time if you're gonna ask me to collect it." And those sentiments really, I mean, the lesson there is really an important lesson for all of us, right? That we have to weigh the organizational expectations for the data that we value so highly against what these folks need to do to do their jobs and the time and capacity they have to deliver their programs. And both are critically important, and finding that balance is the art. And I think that they have been very generous in their work with me to try to find that balance. Jake Rusin said to me the day I applied for this job, "I don't know what you think this job is, but whatever you think, that's not it." And at no time was that more true than during the COVID experience, and I think Jake spoke to that really well. I do feel like I learned so much working with Lisa Frees on what to do with federal money and how to do a lot in a short period of time with big dollars. I was from Human Services, you know? Like, nobody ever gave me $29 million before. And so the idea of doing that well, and she just did that with Grace, and you're gonna hear all about, like, that got dispersed through our organization over time. You're gonna hear a lot about that later today. I want to thank the five of you and give a tip of my hat to Commissioner Beard as well. I think you've been great bosses, and I think you've made me better. Some of you have very, very clearly helped to sharpen my data skills and pushed us to provide better, clear data. But I think that the most important thing that you did for me was, I think you have challenged me and this organization all along to do things that matter because they have substance and not to just do things that look like they matter. And that's a critical difference, and that is what makes it possible for you to lead this organization through to a place that is, I think, always in the pursuit of excellence. I want to thank you personally for your patience. I know I've done some long data presentations, Commissioner Wolf. You have hung in there with me. We've had seemingly never-ending housing workshops. You have hung in there with me. And I think that you have shown so much grace when things have been difficult or when I've tried to bluff my way through either budgets or transportation conversations until Danny and Leslie can step in. So it has been my privilege to be in front of you every month. It has been my privilege to meet with you for coffee and fun and to brainstorm and be creative. It has been my privilege to work in Scott County. I hope that I have returned the favors that you've given me. And I am so encouraged by the young folks that are coming behind me. I think your future is bright, bright, bright. Thank you.
Thank you. Picture. Yeah, we're gonna, before we do that, we're gonna just recess for a few minutes for a little more, trying to talk you out of this. But we're gonna recess this for you, and then we're gonna take a picture first. So we are in recess. All right, we are back from recess. Thank you so much. We are going to just move ahead to item number eight, the Consent Agenda, and then come back for our ARPA presentation. So I will read these, what do we have, 17 that we'll pass in one motion. So 8.1, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-1, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the Shakopee Public Utilities Commission for the County Highway 78 and 79 Roundabout. 8.2, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-2, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the City of Shakopee for the County Road 78 and 79 Roundabout. 8.3, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-32, authorizing direct sale of one vacant remnant parcel along County Highway 17 in the city of Shakopee. 8.4, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-36, authorizing entering into an agreement with the Shakopee Metawakaton Sioux Community for the County Highway 82 and Stemmer Ridge Road, Mystic Lake Boulevard, traffic signal and access modification. 8.5, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-37, authorizing entering into an agreement with the City of Prior Lake for the County Highway 82 pavement rehabilitation project. Thank you. 8.6, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-38, authorizing accepting grant funding, entering into grant agreements with the Metropolitan Council and a budget amendment for regional park projects. 8.7, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-39, approving a request for a county-state aid highway fund advance from the Scott County 2026 construction allotment. 8.8, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-41, authorizing entering a joint powers agreement with the State of Minnesota Department of Corrections for mutual assistance. 8.9, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-42, authorizing a budget amendment and entering an agreement with Nelson Systems LLC for a 911 audio logger and maintenance. 8.10, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-46, approving the preliminary plat and conditional use permit of Demcon 8ZI Bioenergy LLC, Demcon Companies LLC applicant and Brian Rock Products, Inc., property owners. 8.11, Adopt Resolution Number 2025-48, approving the appointment of Jeffrey Smodish as the Personnel Director effective March 10th, 2025. 8.12, Approve appointment and reappointments of citizens to advisory committees. 8.13, Approve the renewal application for 32% malt liquor license for Union Hill Baseball Association in Belle Plaine Township for 2025. 8.14, Approve a renewal application for a Scott County wine license for Union Hill Baseball Association in Belle Plaine Township for 2025. 8.15, Approve the one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Jordan Lions Club in Spring Lake Township. 8.16, Approve record of dispersments and approved claims. 8.17, Approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the 17 items on consent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're gonna move back to 7.1 and receive an update on the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA projects. Leslie Vermillion.
Yeah, good morning. I hardly ever present, and twice in one day. It's kind of amazing. So this is, I'm hoping, our final kind of presentation on ARPA and our trip down ARPA and our investments. I want to thank Jake, who, a couple months ago, when I said, "We need to document this, so when people say in 10 years, 'What did we do with the money?'" We have it on record, and it is clearly defined. Commissioner Allred, one of his goals was to be able to kick the tires and see these things. And so he really did a lot of the work of pulling this information and data together. So I do want to thank him. He's sitting out here. We also have some experts in the audience if you have some specific questions that I might struggle with or might not be able to answer. So this is really how we use those funds. So I want to start with, and you heard Barb talk about it today, but it really stems from our strategic plan, right? Plans don't sit on shelves, at least not in Scott County. We look at them, we implement them. And you had spent a year with us, Chris, leading that charge on redoing the values and updating that plan. And the work spent on this, I think, really was invaluable because it provided us some direction for where you wanted to go with those ARPA funds. So then COVID hits. If you remember, March of 2020, we deliver the CARES money. Lisa and Chris were huge parts of that, our team that did that. And then afterwards, after we spent those CARES funds in the amount of $17 million, in March of '21, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law. And we took a look at these funds. You passed a resolution then in July, accepting the funds. And then in December, they became obligated. And from then on, or excuse me, everything was obligated by December of '24. But it was in between there that we spent time delivering the programs and the projects that you wanted to see done. Kind of gives you the timeline. Kind of gives you the timeline. You were pretty clear, we met with you, that this was kind of a once-in-a-generation. Actually, in May of '85, it'll be 40 years that I've been in government service, and never in my life had I seen funding come this way, where you were able to invest in the community, really at your choosing on what you wanted to invest in. We think you took a pretty thoughtful approach to that. You told us to take a look at our strategic plan, and you wanted them to go into the community as quickly as we could, but you wanted it done very thoughtfully. And so, there were the ARPA requirements, right? You had to have public health, you could go towards employees, revenue, infrastructure. You clearly wanted it to go along with the board goals and your objectives. But then you had these high-level requirements as folks were talking about what we wanted to invest in. You wanted to be able to in 10 to 20 years to see it on the ground, which meant mostly capital, right? You wanted it to be long-lasting. You wanted some community engagement and support. You wanted us to reach beyond the norm, but not a lot of tails to this so that we had to increase levy. And then you wanted it to impact the entire community, that everybody would benefit. So, the first one on the left kind of shows what we projected in February of 2022 when we started work, that 54% of it would go into our community's safety and well-being objective, 34% into housing. As it turned out, by February of 2025, 74% of it went into community safety and well-being, and 13% into housing, 9% into children, 1% into pure infrastructure, and 3% then went into performance. This lists all of the projects and the exact dollar amounts. I don't need to read them to you. We're going to talk through each one, but it is there and how the projects were divided out by our board objectives. The next one was by project type, and this was the big one. This is where you really wanted us to focus. 79%, just under 80% of it went into capital, 10% of it went into operating, 10% of it went into innovation, so trying some new things, and 1% was other, things like giving it to the chamber or workforce mobility projects. Here's by the ARPA category. So, this is where Steve and Adam and folks behind the scene had to make sure that all of our funding, including your revenue recapture, fit into the different categories, and this is how they divided it out. You can see that the biggest part went into mental health services when you take a look at it, then long-term housing security. Oh, excuse me. Provision of government services, that's your revenue recapture. That's where your parks projects are in your 800 megahertz. This is what it takes to deliver a program like that. You saw 84 resolutions come before you to implement this program over the past few years. They are all documented. They all had very specific ARPA language to it, and there's probably a few more along the way, including the CIP and some other general ones that included ARPA projects. But this is what it takes to deliver and the decisions that you made through the projects. So, talking about the projects then specifically, this is a rendering of what your Behavioral Health Center will look like. This was a long haul, a partnership with St. Francis and Alina, and now Open Door Health Center. This came through a lot of community engagement and upfront work to make a recommendation on the need for a behavioral health center. I think it originally had about $5 million program for it. Eventually, it took closer to $8 million in ARPA funds to deliver on this, but we had a housing project fall through, which allowed us to slide some funds to this project. I think that Lisa and, where's Barb back there staring at me? Met every Friday afternoon for about two and a half years, from 3:30 to 5 o'clock, just how they wanted to spend their Fridays in the summer, working on this project to try to get it through. This one is now under construction, and it's going to provide that urgent care, partial hospitalization, if I got that term finally right, for folks that have a need for mental health. And then on the second floor, Open Door is going to provide a clinic for folks who need it. It'll have dental, it'll have behavioral, and it'll have physical doctors and folks for people to see. This is our most exciting picture. This is the 800-megahertz radio tower replacement and expansion. So, this falls under our community safety and well-being, but this is one that Scott Haas and the Sheriff's Office led a study on where do we need additional 800-megahertz power? Originally, I think we thought it would be over in Credit River. It ended up that it was actually the city of Shakopee that needed additional. This one went through a lot of work as well to cite this, eventually on the Spuck Water Tower, and then in exchange for that, they were provided some 800-megahertz radios, which then brings them onto our system, which is good in the times of an emergency. These are both under construction and are part of that Motorola equipment change that we'll be seeing for the rest of our equipment here over the next several years as well. Then we get into some of the revenue recapture and the investments that you wanted in our parks. Having just completed some of these planning, we had a 10-year plan for parks. You were going to make some investments. This really accelerated that and actually helped us complete some of the infrastructure that it would've taken a lot longer to get into the community. This constructed the four camper cabins. It had the partnership of Three Rivers, but it also, as folks know, has the Jordan Public Schools, the Shakopee Schools. The Highway Department stepped up here. It was not easy dealing with Cedar Lake Township, as Commissioner Wolf knows. They came and even visited you over this project, if I remember correctly. A roundabout was constructed, and Tony and Lisa and Adam did a great job, and the rest of the Highway Department getting that project completed, so that the road into the park became the main road with the township teeing into it so we could get out of permitting-type issues that were impossible. This also has a trail, and if I remember right, what Patty told us is, "I think these cabins are rented out every weekend already through the end of the year. There's some weekdays available, but weekends, they're already booked." This is Cleary Lake. So, this is the shower house. It also had the onsite septic. It has a dump station that was constructed and some related infrastructure. If you remember, we had an issue with the Department of Health with the well out there and the septic system. So, those have all been updated, and as you're approving your Cleary Lake master plan, the expansion of that campground is one of the discussions, and how do we get more people out there camping? This sets that up, but it also, right now, I believe the spring will be available then for use by folks that are using the group camps, right, Adam? And the next one, probably one of my favorites, is the Doyle-Kennefick hiking trails. This is a piece of property that we had had since like 2008. It was not in use. We have constructed a beautiful trail down to the little wetland and around. You have a prairie trail on the other side, parking lot there. This was a huge improvement to our park system and getting Doyle-Kennefick open for use. This one actually came in under budget. Miriam Junction Trail. The Cleary Lake project, at the time it was being put together, actually received some funding from the state, which allowed us to shift about $550,000 over to the Miriam Junction Trail of ARPA funds, which helped put that package together. This one is a highly complex project that we're still working on issues right now with the bridges and some of the creeks that the staff is working through. But this had Carver County, the city of Carver, the DNR was involved, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and had an appropriation from Congress to help get this one constructed. And so, hopefully, by sometime in early '27, this project will be open, and it will finally make a connection from a trail that we had bought, the land from the UP, Union Pacific, back in 2008. So, we're going to leave some of your parks projects now and your revenue recapture funds to go into housing, which was your second-biggest area of investment. And this one was for supportive services. This one has to do with providing for our reentry homes. And we have the home in Shakopee, and we have a home in Prior Lake. Damascus Way has been a partner in this, has been Heart, I believe, Molly, Molly's not here. But that we've had about 36 men go through this program over the last couple of years. 18 of them have been out of the program for over a year. We've had one recidivism issue. So, the results of this program have been very good, very positive, besides the skills that Damascus Way is providing these men as they go through this program. Because of the success of that program and that we had a strategic plan in place, we bought the home just to the north of the government center. You can actually see the government center behind us. That then led to a team effort to apply for a federal grant for a women's reentry home. Damascus Way was a successful bidder for the RFP on this one. Heart provided some volunteers and also did some contracted work, so this home is ready to go. And I think we're just in the process of finalizing that federal contract to be able to move women into this home here in the near future. At some point, if we needed for parking and a ramp, we'd have to deal with that, but that is also a long-term use for the county to control those two properties there. The disability housing. So, this one was a partnership with the CDA. They moved forward and said that they'd like to have a quadplex for four units that qualify for disabled housing. They purchased a quadplex here in Shakopee. They did not boot the people out that were living in it, and they obviously had needs to be there, but as two of them opened up, they have now completed, cleaning those up and remodeling those a little bit, and they are placing folks in those two homes. There were some dollars left from that, which then they applied to the Beacon Home, which you can see in the bottom portion there on the right side, which is also for supportive housing, which is under construction right now. We then had our faith-based. We went through a process of roundtables with some of our nonprofits and our faith-based members here in our community. You went through a process of an application where we received about, I think, 11 or so. Folks applied for some funds. We selected ALOs. They purchased this quadplex. Right now, they have four families. They have to be a family with minor children living in this. Heart provided some of the needs for the, excuse me, for the homes themselves, and has supported ALOs through this. This is one where not everything did go according to HOIL. We had some issues getting this one up and running with some flooding issues. And the facilities department, Troy and Connor and Bryant, just did a fantastic job working with Chris to get this up and through building inspections and open. And so, again, the whole county, the whole team, everybody working together to make this happen. We are now going on, later this spring, the first family will open in it about a year. The next one up is Shepherd of the Lake Opportunity. I'm going to say solo, just out of habit. I think they are working on a name for it right now, the group is, because it's not very solo. This is a partnership. The CDA has been just a tremendous partner with us on this. They actually build buildings, they build apartment complexes. We don't. They have taken the lead on this. But this has also taken Jake and Chris and Barb and Adam to meet with the church, to meet with the SMSC, to meet with the CAP agency, to put together the different service contracts with CAP, but then an MOU with Shepherd of the Lake Church, who has other faith communities working with them to provide food, to provide some of the needs, that the community is actually going to step up and support this 14-unit building. It went out for bids and just came in last, like, two weeks ago at $5.6 million. Adam, was that right? $5.6 million? The estimate was $6 million we had from the state of Minnesota to construct it. We had used ARPA money to buy the land and do the closing and work with the link, so that will also be under construction, if it's not already, very shortly. The goal is to have that open to families in November. The Housing Trust. This is one where the county has had land since about 1994, maybe '95. This sits at the northwest quadrant of county highway 16 and 18 in Shakopee. The land was bought as part of the bypass project to build county highway 18. There was a remnant parcel left. It had been sitting there. So, when you challenged us to take a look at housing and opportunities to use our land, this was identified as a buildable parcel. So, we had a contract for about $1.3 million, which went out there and did the grading and the utilities. You can see it set up for construction. The city of Shakopee, their council and their planning commission were strong on moving this forward as well. It took their approvals to be able to do this. But this will now construct single-family workforce housing. These are folks that have jobs, that are trying to enter into this community, and it'll be through their CDA land trust program, where the CDA will remain the owner of the land below it. The folks will have a mortgage, they'll close on their home. There's some gap funding to help with that, and then when they go to sell, they get a portion of the increased value, and then some of it stays with the CDA, so you can buy those costs down, and again, an entry workforce family can come into that home. The CDA, of course, had been busy getting the Shepherd of the Lake project out the door, so the next one is, they're going to have a contract with a builder to begin with three homes yet this spring, so we'll start to see construction. They received a grant from Minnesota Housing and then some additional funds from the Met Council to start moving this project forward. The Family Resource Center expansion. So, you folks are familiar with the Family Resource Center. This was, again, the Marshall Road Transit Station. We decided, when the building was built then, to move transit over here to the government center, which opens some of this space up. It brings the Family Resource Center into Marshall Road. It took some remodeling work, so this one has some capital dollars involved in it. You can see about $670,000 for capital, and it also renovated one of the old garages. I'm excited to get over and look at it, but there's a children's play space now that just looks transformed, is my understanding. Suzanne's nodding her head back there. But where kids can play and burn off energy if their parents are meeting, or if there's activities that we need to do for children. And then there was also about $500,000 for the innovative part of it, for some cultural navigators and some services to buy a system for the database so that we can track some data, and then that you can see soft case management. This one has all kinds of partners, right? Macassa, Three Rivers, Destiny Dads through Damascus Way, I believe, NAMI, Isserun. And the more partners we have here, I believe ultimately, the more successful we're going to be as we determine the future of the Family Resource Center. The next one up is also in the innovation category. This is for children, but it's the ed neglect prevention. So, we have been watching children, right? That's been one of your primary goals. There's been literacy, it's been working with families, it's changing some of those generational patterns. And so, this one is really about how do we keep kids from getting into that deep-end system, right? If they have seven, if they're under 12 and they have seven unexcused absences, the school has to report them for ed neglect. So, that puts them into child protection. So, again, why are we waiting to seven? Why aren't we talking at two or three? The teachers, the school, they then contact St. David's. They work with these families. We don't even know who these kids necessarily are, but trying to find out what the issue is or what we can do to get them back into school and on the right path. This is one now that is funded through '26. We'll continue to look at that data in '25 and '26, but this is one we would have to figure out how we're going to fund moving forward. But again, it's prevention versus being in the deep-end service. I think the results are very promising when you look at the shift and where we're seeing the children. The next one up is the Southwest Metro Drop-In Daycare Center. That is an actual picture of it at the building there over at Valley Green. We put in about $270,000. It is there, it is ready to go. They have had trouble staffing it, and so, their new, you know, they had a shift in their superintendent. Their new superintendent reached out early this year, and Brandon in our economic training and workforce, he is reaching out, Joe over at the CDA, they're coordinating to see if we can look at- They're coordinating to see if we can look at it even a little differently, to bring somebody in, to see if we can retain some people. But again, we're all working together. He reached out for help so that we can get this open. Our staff knows it's a need. He knows it's a need over there. And so trying to get this open to help families when they're in their classes will be a very big positive. And again, we are trying to support it, and we have our workforce folks stepping up to Here is the Scott County Fair Tower and Fiber Run. So this is one that we added on partway through. We have been trying to work with the fair for years, right? Generating some revenue, being able to use these buildings off fair season. This used some revenue recapture, and we actually ran some fiber here and put up a tower. They used it this fair, which meant that their vendors actually could take credit cards instead of having cash only. It was very successful. We are hoping now that they will put a plan. Brad's been working with them to try to sit down with the CDA and see if we can put a business plan together, where they could use some of their other buildings that were put up for dog shows or horse shows or craft shows, whatever it might be, now that vendors wouldn't have to have cash only, if this can help support making them be a little more sustainable on their own moving forward. We then invested about seventy-five thousand dollars in a workforce mobility agreement with Dakota County Tech College. And this really was about five different jobs in helping folks that were unemployed or underemployed get training. I think this helped lead to the STRIFE for Five, which is the bigger program that is ongoing right now. But the results on this, when we provided those to staff, again, was positive in the amount of folks that went through that program. And Extended Access. This project, I think, when we saw the data, has been a huge success. The numbers only continue to expand. We have added the additional libraries to it. Jordan went on before COVID, and the rest of them have come on since. But this included modifying a building, right? If you were at Savage, if you were at Prior Lake, we had to do some modifications. It also required some software and hardware that had to be. And then this also included the agreement that took us through twenty-twenty-six for the operation. I believe it's about eighty thousand dollars a year ongoing for us to operate that and get all of our libraries open from six to ten. It is an amazing, amazing thing to be able to do that for those amount of dollars. And then staff. Staff were eligible for funding through ARPA. Of course, it had to be completed by twenty-twenty-four, so no staff as of twenty-five are being funded. Most of ours, though, were to deal with the court backlog or to implement the jail plan that you had already moved forward, right? So we had two jail corrections officers. We moved about eight of them in, if you remember. This helped us fund two through twenty-twenty-four, when Danny shows you some of that feathering into our budget. This is part of what we're trying to feather into. We then have the children's mental health case manager. That was about fifty percent of a position through, I believe, like twenty-two and twenty-three. The next ones now are the PSI writer, the history writer, the probation officer. Those all had to do with the community corrections. And so it was trying to help get those reports and that backlog taken care of. Ultimately, then, in twenty-twenty-three, a good chunk of funding came to help fund these positions, or at least a big chunk of that, and move that forward. The legal assistant, the victim and witness assistant, and then the assistant county attorneys and law clerk, those were to help the county attorney's office move things through during the backlog as well. And if you remember, Judge Lennon, I think, even spoke to everybody here at one point, that we were one of the first counties to get rid of our court backlog because of the investment of the county and of the investment of our court system here. The legal assistant and the victim witness assistant also stayed. So the positions on the left stayed within our organization. The positions on the right did not stay in the organization. We had one community outreach officer who retired within about a year of starting. We did not replace that position. So here's your other. We did some other things along the way. We contributed about forty thousand dollars to the Chamber of Commerce. If you remember, they asked very early on to help do some advertising for everybody south of the river. There was some money that went for administration. When I asked Steve about this, he really said that it went to some of that PP&amp;E, so masks and cleaning, like, early on in twenty-one. We were still in the middle of the pandemic, some of those types of materials that we needed to either put back into the org or that we needed to use at that time. And then we spent about twenty thousand dollars on the study to take a look at Bonavista from a housing standpoint. The property owner made a decision. He didn't want to move forward. We discontinued that study. So I think we got quite a few dollars pretty efficiently and quickly back into the system. I really want to hit on that strategic plan, that it gave us direction and a place to go with these and where your priorities were. The majority, again, almost eighty percent, were capital. And if you add in the innovation, it's closer to eighty-nine percent were innovation and capital projects. We were one of the first through the court backlog. And your staff delivered this without any additional consulting or staff. They took twenty-eight-point-nine million dollars and delivered this. And I would say that this really helped break down silos throughout the organization. When you have your transportation director willing to give up transit at Marshall Road for a mental health behavioral center with the HHS director, that talks about this org and the understanding about the outcomes for our residents, which are the priorities. There are people in this org who have touched this, who we wouldn't even know they've probably touched it because somebody else was working on it and they had to pick up that load. So it took all eight-hundred and some of us to deliver this. You saw the resolutions. You had to make choices through this, is where you wanted the money to go. I am going to, at the risk of missing somebody, try to thank, though, a few people. I have to thank Steve Jones. He provided all of these reports, every quarter or whenever they were due, and audit information. He followed all these webinars and all the other educational opportunities, then making sure we met the federal law, right? It wasn't easy. Mary Keane, Cassie Coke, Maria Heller, these folks who did all of these contracts to make sure they met the ARPA requirements, that the resolutions met the ARPA requirements. You can't move these things without folks like that that know what they're doing and they do it right. I already hit on Barb and Lisa, you know, who helped bring home this Behavioral Health Center, which ended up being the largest investment we made and is probably going to have one of the largest impacts on our community. But those meetings and working through this building to this building to finally coming back to, all right, we need to just own this building and be able to make the decisions. And I think that ended up finally being the right decision as well, and Barb's perseverance on that and working through. And then we have to thank Adam, who project managed the solo project, the Behavioral Health Center project, the eight-hundred-megahertz project, and he kept up a spreadsheet with Steve that we could sit in a meeting and make decisions on the spot, all while he was still carrying the fifty-nine-one, sixty-nine interchange and other highway responsibilities. So it takes this whole organization to deliver it, but there were a few people, I think, that just really stepped up to help deliver these. And so I'm hoping, Commissioner Olaf, that in ten years, folks can kick tires out in parks and kick buildings, and they'll be able to see where these ARPA dollars went, and that some of these innovation projects will be able to continue to move forward if they show the results we're seeing now, that'll have positive outcomes for the community. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and you also have lots of experts out here who can answer some questions, if you have some.
Thank you very much. I'm going to look down to my left and right if any questions.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I don't have questions, just a couple of comments. Just want to echo Leslie's thanks to staff. We know you did all this on top of, in addition to all your regular work, and it is amazing that it got done. I just want to clarify one thing that I think is another thank you to staff. When we look at the chart about some of our original thoughts of putting more, a higher percentage into housing, and what we ended up with was a little bit less, I just want to say I think that many dollars were directed towards housing. It's just staff really worked hard to get some other outside grants and funding to support those projects. So not only were they administering ARPA, but when we had these projects we were working on, they went out and said, well, wait, there's some other funding mechanisms that we can bring in. And knowing that that takes work and applications and reporting, too, they brought that in to subsidize that. I see some heads nodding, so I think I'm true, I'm correct on that. So thank you. And then finally, Leslie, I think you summed up, you know, people working together and breaking down silos and all of that innovation work that happened. I guess the challenge to us as an organization is, how do we continue that without twenty-nine million dollars to work on it? But let's make sure we continue that, because it has been amazing to see that, see that growth and that interest and excitement of people from all kinds of departments on things that maybe they didn't used to think was part of their business. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You were correct on the housing. You know, you've made it clear you didn't want a big shelter in Scott County. We've heard that since day one. But you wanted smaller housing that fit the needs of our community. And I think when you look at these, right, you see smaller type that meet different needs, if it's reentry, if it's family, if it's disability housing. And so you've seen that, and they were. With Shepherd of the Lake, together, they all wrote a grant to Minnesota Housing, which brought in six million dollars, right, to fund the construction of Shepherd of the Lake. So you're spot-on on that, Commissioner Brackey.
Yes. I'm not positive that I actually use the term "kick the tires," because, you know, really, we said we wanted projects that had legs, that, you know, in the future, we could point to and say, look, that is still providing value to the people of Scott County. That is still something that we did that's going to live on, that people are going to use for decades. And as opposed to spending money, you know, one time, it's all gone, and we don't have anything to show for it, other than the immediate need that it met at that point. So, but on the score of having legs and providing value for decades to the residents of Scott County, it's a big success.
Yes.
And I want to thank you on that. When I think of kicking tires, I think of somebody that never buys anything. So that's not what I meant at all.
I just want to say thank you to the Board of Commissioners that was in place before me, who had to make the decision on the direction of the ARPA funds, and really the staff for making it easy for me to make decisions once I came here. So they always had the ability to answer questions, and so I just want to thank you.
Yeah, this was one of those moments in times that almost feels like a, hopefully it was a once-in-a-lifetime event, kind of a opportunity out of crisis. And we were all of one accord that, yes, we wanted these projects to have legs and not tails. That was always the, we'd always follow it up, we don't want tails. We don't want to be building something that, oh, man, now it's creating this whole legacy of tails for the next who-knows-how-long. We want these things to be able to run and breathe and live on their own and be transformative. And yes, there was a lot of late-night hours and staff delivered, so an opportunity we didn't, or a crisis we really didn't ask for, but an opportunity came out of that and all of the things that you've demonstrated here with not only the projects, but also that cohesiveness and silo-breaking and opportunities for us to be more of one another as we look forward to the future. So, and yes, we do not want these things to become government-y. I don't know if that's a word, but we want them to be free and transformative without too much government intervention, and so far, so good. And that is something that we're always aware of. We don't want this to turn into some administrative nightmare. So, well done, and hopefully we're, that's in the rearview mirror, no more pandemics. All right, any other last questions? Any? All right, otherwise, we are going to move on to, we're going to move to item number nine, committee reports and commissioner updates. I'm going to look down to my right.
Donna, thank you, Mr. Chair. February fourth, we all attended a workshop after the board meeting. Also, on February fourth, had CAP Agency Finance Committee meeting. There's been some turnover again with the CAP CFO, you know, six, seven months ago, but really with some consultants, really, CAP's in a good place, has a very clean audit that we just got the report on, and understandably, has some concerns about that agency, especially with Head Start, has a ton of federal grants and has had some ups and downs over the past few weeks, and really working to just be nimble. And, you know, obviously, if a big federal grant goes, they'll have to lay off a lot of staff very quickly or close down Head Start classrooms. So a lot of discussion there, and just the board's just trying to help the agency be ready for whatever comes while continuing to do the work while it can. So just wanted to tell you about that. February fifth, Law Library Board Meeting. Also, February fifth, Leslie and I had our quarterly meeting with the mayor and city administrator of New Prague. Just great always to hear about the development and activities. They're working, they're working hard to figure out their new police station, which is, and how to finance that, as it's very needed. They really need that space. Excuse me. February sixth had the SHAC meeting, Statewide Community Health Services Advisory Committee meeting, talking there just about foundational public health, those things we do that we need to do, like monitoring tuberculosis cases, vaccines, and really some uncertainty with state budget, state and federal budget on those issues. Also, February sixth, Justice Steering Committee meeting. February seventh, Scale Executive Committee meeting. The Scale Executive Committee did decide for the rest of the year to move the executive committee meetings to the third of Friday, to give a little more time between the executive committee meeting and the general membership meeting. February tenth was Scale Legislative Update, so the Scale Lobbyists will be doing that every other week, and those quick half-hour Monday updates are open to all Scale members. So I know that, I think the Zoom link's been sent out with some correspondence, but if you need it, Tracy can get it to you for the upcoming every other Monday, just touch points with the Scale Lobbyists. February eleventh, Leslie and I had our monthly meeting. February eleventh was also CAP Agency Board Meeting, talked about that. February twelfth, I attended the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce Main Street Breakfast at O'Brien's. A really great turnout from business owners in that Main Street area, the city, and then just other chamber members wanting to hear about what's going on there. Plans are underway for all the summer activities, including rhythm on the rails, and the bands were introduced or whatever, unveiled. There we go. February twelfth, Micah Board Meeting. Obviously, lots of talk about all the thousands of bills that are starting to hit, and Micah County's trying to find their commonality on those. February thirteenth, I attended Transportation Alliance Day at the Capitol, was able to chat a bit with Representatives Baikberg and Tapke and Senator Pratt about transportation-type issues, so it was good to see them, good to get up there and see them in their place. February fourteenth was our Scale Monthly Meeting, and then today, Commissioner Brennan and I had our monthly meeting with Health and Human Services Director Barb Dahl to talk all things health and human services. That's the end of my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Olaf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the fourth, Alcoa New Market, the administrator and I met with the mayor and the administrator of Alcoa New Market, just to talk about some emerging issues over there. That evening, New Market Township met, and the big thing there is we've been working on this deal with Cedar Lake to, you know, who's going to take care of what roads and plow and whatever on roads that go right down the middle of each township, and I think they have a deal. So, and it's been only like three years, anyhow, and it's like fifteen hundred bucks. Anyhow, the tenth, planning and zoning, a couple permits issued there. On the eleventh, Prior Lake City, and on the twelfth, MESB met, had a few issues there about some things coming up with PSPs and things like that. So on the thirteenth, I-35 Solutions Committee met. So on the 13th, I-35 Solutions Committee met. Very good meeting. And then Elko New Market City Council meeting that night, they sworn a new officer. Spring Lake Township met that evening and then Scale meeting on the 14th. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. I met with Dave Unmott and Fred Corrigan in the Scott County Historical Society on February 5th. We are talking about the 30-year anniversary of the Bloomington Ferry Bridge opening and to see if we can put together something for letting the community know. It was such a big event and the impact on Scott County. So, February 5th, I had my Parks PAC meeting. February 6th, there was the Transportation Meeting with staff and Commissioner Alrick. February 6th, I met with Lisa Anderson, Cover County Commissioner, and we talked about the Lower Minnesota Watershed District. February 6th, I met with Janet Williams and Lisa Quinn. Lisa updated me on the Spring Lake Township. And Janet has stepped up, as you probably saw, to be on the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. So I really appreciate the fact that she's doing that. I think the wealth of information that she has regarding the ports and the Fen and Savage is going to be really beneficial. February 7th, I had a meeting with Brad Davis. February 10th was the Human Services Resource Council meeting. And we had an update on vaccines and the truancy program. February 11th was the CDA meeting. And a lot of the things that Leslie talked about with the ARPA update was brought up at the meeting at the CDA. The CDA approved the Scott County Agreement to develop the SOLO project. You know, SOLO project, it reminds me of Red Beer Cup, so I hope we do change that name. Let's see, the housing, they also approved a housing rehabilitation program using Laha funds for the city of Shakopee. And they also approved their available grants agreement with the Met Council for the Marine Edition Homes. And I think they're planning on two homes this summer in the Marine Edition. Let's see, February 11th, I had a meeting with Mayor Lehman and Lisa Fries to talk about roads and transportation and bridges. February 14th was the Scale meeting. And February 14th, I had my meeting with Leslie Vermillion. And then this morning, Barb Doll and Barb Blackman Brackey on Health and Human Services.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Alrick.
On the 6th, I had a meeting with the Savage Mayor and Administrator with Leslie Vermillion. And later that same day, we had a Scott County Transportation Committee meeting. And we talked about a subject that had never come up in my entire time here, was adding or applying to add new mileage to the CASA formula. So there's segments of land or roadway or right of way that we would like to add into the CASA, like 8, Highway 8. And sometimes you have to trade a little bit, you have to say, well, we'll take this little segment out or you'll, you know, sometimes you might even ask for a little more than you would hope for being able to give that away. You know, it's like, no, okay, if you cut us back, this is what we want to come back, cut back. But it was kind of an interesting process. I'd never been part of that, it doesn't come up very often. I don't know if, this is probably the first time it's come up, or second? Okay, 96 or so, yeah, before my time. Okay, on the 7th, the Scale Executive Committee, we have a new slate of officers, a good slate that Barbara's kind of worked to solidify that slate. And those will be, we don't vote, but those will be, come to a consensus at the next meeting. I don't anticipate any question because they've basically been in training, you know, moving up the ladder of, not all, but like, yeah, they've been moving up in the rotation, so that should be not a problem. The 10th, the Zoom Legislative Committee, later that same day, the Suburban Transit Association. We have four main providers in that. We've got Southwest, MVTA, Plymouth and Maple Grove. And we're having a hard time getting on the same page in terms of ask. What do we ask at the legislature? Some don't have massive, fairly massive reserves and they almost feel, I think, between the lines, a little embarrassed to ask for more because they've got a lot of money. And then others, you know, like Southwest and MVTA, with shifting responsibilities. Met Council wants to give more responsibilities back to the providers and that increases the cost. And so MVTA and Southwest will need to ask for money, but so it's hard to get our little group of four on the same page. So that remains to be seen how that's going to happen. The 11th, a meeting with Chris Meyer regarding the RTF, the Regional Training Facility. That's the subject of the workshop coming up. Fish, on the 13th, the topic was sex trafficking, which was something you just don't realize what's going on, you know, in our community or in the metro area, or how much of a problem this is and the horrific things that are happening. So it was a lot of information there. 14th, the Scale meeting. And also after Scale, we had a little meeting with newly electeds to give them an idea. What is Scale? Why do we value Scale? What are the values of Scale? Why is Scale important? You know, and I've known for a long time, there's a saying that says, vision leaks. Which that, what that means is if you don't keep repeating the vision for something, people forget why, you know, forget what's important. And so I gave a little commercial at Scale about going over the values a little bit. And, but I think it's important to encourage ourselves to hold on to those values and keep them vibrant. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. On the 4th, as was mentioned, a post-board workshop. On the 5th, had lunch with Jake Bruceing and a constituent who had some insights potentially on some data analytics, as well as what's going on with some of our nonprofits and faith groups and there's some interest there. So just kind of a introductory meeting. On the 6th, I was invited to tour the Shakopee, pointing over my shoulder, just down the road here, the Shakopee Women's Home. Hart did a, led a prayer and blessing time with many of the folks that volunteer as part of their construction crew. And so I got to see that house and be part of that prayer and blessing time. Lisa Fries also joined me with that. So you get to hear the stories of what this place, because I didn't see it before. Dark and looking up here, it was dark and dank and dingy and it's now bright and airy. And so looking forward to seeing how that can be used to transform folks' lives and have better outcomes. And having community partners come along our side and do that greatly reduce costs with lots of volunteer efforts is huge. Let's see here, on the 7th, had a call with Greater MSP, the CEO Peter Frost, just of kind of some of the vision leaks things you talked about. Just conversations on what we're thinking, what counties are thinking, you know, what's led to an invitation to have them come out to do a workshop, potentially in April for an hour, just to re-engage and see if that's something that we're all still on the same page. So tentatively, we'll see, I don't know how that's actually going to work out on the workshop schedule, but potentially a time in April. On the 10th, Scale Service Delivery. I believe this was on the 10th, also was down in St. Paul, at that big building on the hill, to talk about HF5, House File 5. And my big push there was like, hey, you start pushing leverage, you start pulling buttons and impacts county's budgets. And to be mindful of whatever changes they make to make sure that all stuff runs downhill and to engage with us to see when you make a decision over here, what it actually means on the ground. So I believe that was on the 10th, so we'll see where that goes, if anywhere, the House bill, House File. On the 11th, had Labor and Management Lunch. I think it was a great time of great discussion about all kinds of things. One of the things that came up there was information and, you know, we're in an uncertain world, maybe more than ever, or maybe not, depending upon where you're at in that. But there was a conversation that maybe potentially we're conveying too much information and then people are getting nervous and running it out to the end about not being able to potentially supply our folks with notepads and pens. They said, no, we've never discussed that, that's not, pens and paper are not on the chopping block. But we want to be an organization that communicates what we're seeing and hearing at the state and DC, not knowing what those things will be. But we want to be an organization that communicates things that we find noteworthy or things people see in the news and how that lands here. We don't want to over-communicate and we certainly don't want to under-communicate. So how do, where do we find that line? So it was a good discussion and I think that that is an area where we can all bring our discussion points and have very good conversations. So, you missed the Jimmy Johns, which I know is your favorite, so I saved some for you. Let's see, on the 11th, later that night, attended the Prior Lake Work Session and then the subsequent City Council. The work session of note was they discussed the RTF. And I believe in their next official council meeting, they will be taking action on something along the lines of that they are in. They are all in on the RTF Option 2, I think it was. We're going to talk more about that in the workshop, you know, committing, you know, some amount of cash, you know, some, obviously a lot of details to be worked out, but they are saying yes. And we'll find out more about that on their official action and we'll also talk more about that in the work session which follows. 212, M E S B in St. Paul. We had a discussion a little bit about regional conversations with PSAPS and what that might mean as we look at some of those things with other counties. So just planting those seeds and bringing some green shoots, so we'll see where that goes. 13th, the Greater MSP actually had their board meetings as part of that. And they're going to be looking at moving those more in person as they were back in the good old days. 14th was Scale was discussed and with that, that concludes my report. Looking down to my left for our county administrator.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to hit on a couple legislative things. One was, want to thank Barb and Commissioner Brackey and Jake. I think we have a really good mid-choices delegation coming together for, that's been a priority for us on moving from one-year reassessments to three. But we have a very good county packet coming together of major counties that are supporting this, plus nonprofits. And these guys have really been out leading that. Barb has just been a leader in trying to move this change forward at the state. And now you're going to get a chance at the federal level in a couple of weeks. The other one was House File 5 and the work that Perry and Lisa and Commissioner Beard did on that to, if you go back to that 2023 Transportation Bill, it was really about trying to improve the metro area, right? It was a negotiated bill with a lot of folks because the metro area is a loser in all of our formulas. At the CASA level, we pay in over 60-some percent into the highways or trust fund. The metro counties, the seven of us, only get 21.5% back. And MINDAT Metro, it only gets about 40% back over the last few years. And so this bill actually was giving some dollars to the metro. It was putting all of the transit operation costs, taking it off of county's backs and putting it to the Metropolitan Council. And so when they make proposals like this, even if they wanted to eliminate or change, don't take it away from those seven metro counties because we are carrying the load. If MINDAT or Met Council doesn't deliver, where does it end up? It ends back up on one of the seven metro counties to deliver the interchange, to deliver the transitway. And so they need to really think about what that bill was intended to do. And then finally, you approved the anaerobic digester today, which I think was a good step forward, right, towards our solid waste discussion. But at the presentation two weeks ago, you had given our staff kind of the go-ahead to sit down and talk to Ramsey Washington and Brad and Kate did that. And just a little update, I want to keep this in front of you, so we're continuing to talk about it. But they had a gap, if you remember, of about 16,000 tons of organics that they needed to feed this digester. Scott County, we could generate about 7,600, so maybe a little less than half is what we could generate. The issue, right, is how would we do that? How would you transfer it? So right now, it's, you know, sitting down and having discussions with providers and is it a cart method? Is it a bag method? So, you know, the cart method is Hennepin County, the bag method is Ramsey and Washington. But how you would sort those streams and how you would move those, we're going to have to sit and continue to have discussions with. And which would be, one, the most impactful, but also which is cost efficient, right? And then how would you transfer that? And so we are going to continue to meet with Carver County and with Dakota County as they're continuing to have these discussions as well. So we'll keep you informed moving forward.
Thank you very much. Looking down to my right, county attorney.
Mr. Chair, we do not need to meet.
Love it. Thank you very much. And before we adjourn, I just want to mention that we will be meeting right after this for a workshop to talk about the Regional Training Facility, the RTF. And also, as always, a last item, Commissioner Ron Robin. With that.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second and in discussion, otherwise all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.